Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Board of Health Suror Commissioners Meeting of June 12, 2024. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans to attend in person versus virtual attendance. The meeting will be held in person in the main meeting room of Deerfield Municipal Offices. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, anyone attending to record the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk Blake Gilmore and provide their name and address for the record. All right, so I'll call a meeting to order at 6:03 PM. We're going to start off with public comment. I know there are some people in the audience who'd like to come up and make some comments, so come on up, whoever. Please identify yourself. You can sit at the table. I think these mics might work better. Sure, and you sort of have to get really close to the mic, otherwise.
In the background. Leah. You're ruining it.
No, I'm not.
Her phone is literally down, upside down.
Megan, I'm gonna mute you.
So my name's David Johnson. I live at 112 North Main Street here in South Deerfield. And I'm concerned about health hazard, biohazard, about a recently deceased horse. It was buried immediately adjacent to my property line. And I'm concerned for a number of reasons. Groundwater contamination risks, a disease spreading potential, and the legality of the entire situation. In large part, I'm concerned because we have a regular problem with groundwater there to begin with. I live in a floodplain, so water is always an issue. Over and above that, I don't know what the cause of death of the horse was. So I don't know if it was illness or some other incident, because I don't know if there was any veterinary assessment as to what happened there. So I can't be conclusive about, you know, potential hazards. And in addition, in addition to that, the Bloody Brook runs to the western side of my property. So there's always water coming down off the hillside, across the back fields, through the property immediately adjacent to my own, through the property of Ms. Price that runs in the direction of Bloody Brook. The water table there is very high. If we dig down eighteen to twenty-four inches, you can watch the water run by. So we're very concerned about that. In my own behalf, I'm concerned about bacteria. I'm concerned about contamination. I have fruit on my property. The historically noted grapes that settlers stopped to eat. I have grape harvests on my property. I don't think it's safe to eat that this summer. I have huge raspberry bushes in the corner. I don't think it's safe to eat that this summer because of something that was done in a fashion that I think lacked foresight in terms of implications and ramifications. I really believe that it poses a biohazard, a health hazard. I think over and above that, because it's a residential area, I think it has potential impact for years to come in terms of the property itself. Because of the water table, we all have some pumps in an area. Ms. Price's property is the eastern side. The water runs east to west. What kind of assurance can I get that the water leaking into my basement won't be toxic at some point in time? Again, a scientist I'm not, but I've done a little bit of research and I've tried to find articles that were not written particularly in legalese so that I could understand them. And I found one article in particular that I provided a copy to all of you. It talks about the stages of decomposition. The first of which occurs in days to weeks, which is where we are now. Bloat and active decay characterized by risks of emission of odors, toxic gases, attracting scavengers and pests. Then the next stage is advanced decay, leaching of fluids, soil contamination, and that happens in weeks to months, which means we're still on the very front end of this, not knowing what happens subsequently. I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. Over and above that, this burial site again is maybe six feet from my property and immediately adjacent to Ms. Price's house. Maybe, again, I would have to guess, but I have pictures that I took. It's maybe maybe twelve, maybe fifteen feet at most. It just seems to present with difficulties that are far reaching from property values to the disease and illness to soil contamination. And as I said, even in terms of fruit and produce, I think it has lots of implications that we need to address in some fashion. I also know that, having done a little bit of research, that there are no particular guidelines and that historically in agricultural areas where there's large pasture land, houses and horses can be buried in large open pastures. We're not talking about a large open pasture here. We're talking about a thick residential neighborhood. It's a very different set of circumstances. I also know too that in terms of laws, there are no general Commonwealth laws governing all this and that it's delegated to the respective communities. Until we had this incident, I suspect we haven't had any laws or any bylaws to address this kind of a situation. But now it's upon us and we really have to do something. I also know, having read the UMass Extension Corps, that their recommendations are it's a terrible thing now to exhume the decaying body because it creates a potential greater biohazard. I'm not challenging that. What I am wondering is is a lesser biohazard not a biohazard because it's not a greater biohazard? I mean, I think there's a biohazard no matter what's going on. So again, I'm here out of concern. I'm not assuming an adversarial position. I'm not angry, but I'm very worried about this. I'm worried for another reason and that four weeks ago, yesterday, I had major surgery. Rick rushed to the hospital in the middle of the evening. And okay, I'm doing very well and I'm healing quite well. But I don't want to contract anything. I think that's a legitimate concern, at least for me.
Sure.
So in terms of initial concerns, I guess that's what I'd like to present. And I would encourage my neighbors to share their points of view as well. I think it's important because it's not an "I", it's a "we". We're very concerned about the implications and the ramifications and consequences of this from house property values to including health and wellbeing of all the residents.
So. So just one final question for you. I mean, it sounds as though you and your neighbors feel the horse should be removed from where it's buried. Is that consensus or what is your desired outcome?
Well, I don't know, because in the best of all possible worlds, I think that would make the most sense. I'm also not sure that's possible based on what I read from UMass Extension Crops and their recommendations. Again, this is not my wheelhouse and I have to acknowledge that. I also know that a friend of mine who's a contractor spoke to me today about coming in and digging a trench and filling it with clay and my property to prevent contamination. I shouldn't have to do that. I mean, I shouldn't have to remediate a problem I didn't create. So I don't know what the best solution is, but I know something has to happen because there's this big mound and I have pictures that I can provide you with if you like. You saw, you came.
Yeah, I already saw.
The burial site as well. Something has to happen. I don't know what that is, but I do know that the implications are far reaching here. I know it's a I think it's a difficulty, it's a broad spectrum difficulty.
In the interest of letting your neighbors speak, we have a 6:15 hearing that we have to start. So if one of your neighbors also wants to start, we got two minutes left. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to cut you off. I know it's important.
Foxville 110 North Main Street. And my property. Ms. Price's property. Again, she didn't. And I share the same environmental concerns that Dave does. I've got two small children, two-year-old, a four-year-old. This is the area. My house is built in 1905. It's a fieldstone foundation. There's water that comes in. There's continuously water moving from the field, which is, you know, usually grows corn and it's sold at farm stand down the street. Right in the corner of that field, it floods right behind my house. I have a bunch of pictures which I can share with you guys, but every time that it rains, the field floods right next to Ms. Price's property. And then it comes across my property and Dave's property into the turnaround by Monument and on its way to Bloody Brook. So it's a constant issue. It happens in the winter when there's rain. It happens during the thaw and it happens all summer anytime there's some sort of moderate rain event. So this water is a consistent theme and there is contamination somewhere and it's probably my house. It's probably on the edge of her property, which is the least flow, right? Closest to Dave's property. So it's not going across hers. It's going directly onto ours. And I, you know, it seems like an odd place to bury a horse. I would like someone to look further into what are the actual health hazards here and what can be done about it. I know that we found we're early in the stage, so this is something that we should deal with immediately and not ruminate about and wait a couple of weeks and then say, oh, well, now it's past a certain point, right? We're still in the early stage of it, so we should be able to do something and come up with a solution before groundwater becomes an issue.
All right, so one thing that I know we're going to do is we're going to share the information that you provided with our town council tomorrow morning and find out what our options are as a town. I mean, we'll try to find a solution that meets everyone's concerns, what that solution will be. I still sound like you would like to see the horse removed and that if I were the neighbor, I would perhaps feel that way too. But let us consult with them and try to do something as quickly as possible if we're going to do something.
And yeah, and just so that you know, we've been reaching out to different agencies, state agencies to help us with this. And this is a unique situation. There's no question. So I don't really, I can't, there's no definitive answer at this point. And like I said, we're trying to reach out to see if we've got somebody that can guide us through this to try to figure out how, get an end result for you.
Great. And to the future, I think, you know, if there is any result from this too, we should probably come up with some sort of regulations of how this is dealt with in town. And I know when I looked into the zoning, it's Central Village. And I don't know how that pertains to burying agricultural livestock. But it's something that we should look into.
All right. I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll sorry that if anyone else was looking to comment that we have to start the hearing that's scheduled for 6:15. Notice a public hearing town of Deerfield in accordance with the NGL Chapter 140, Section 157 and Town of Deerfield Bylaws, Chapter 60, Section 10. The Deerfield Select Board will hold a public hearing on, this is, which one am I reading? Do I, this one has February 7th, but this is a continuation.
That's the continuation of that hearing for reference. That's what it said.
Does it go into continuation later or I just read this?
Um, I don't, I think you could simply say that you're continuing.
So this is, yeah, this is a continuation of a public hearing that began on February 7th and has had one or two other meetings. So at this point, are all the parties here? I see Joel Thomas. I can't see the last, Adam Adams, yes, and Jeremy Cohen, who represents the the dog owner. So where are we?
Good evening. Again, Jeremy Cohen for Kate Clayton Jones. When we last met, you may recall, it was for Ms. Clayton Jones to take additional affirmative steps to try to reduce the barking or the noise coming from her property. And so I submitted some photos from a while back that my client, she wrapped her fences with privacy materials so that, because we had discussed in the hearing that maybe if the the dogs can't see out, they can't be triggered by a moving person or another dog walking by since it's a busy area. And so she put those, she implemented that probably two months ago. I sent everything about a month ago. I'm not, so she's done something towards this to ameliorate the situation. I'm not sure how it's, I haven't heard any feedback yet. If it's been effective or not.
Yeah, we are in receipt of those photographs. Mr. Thomas Adams, have you something to add? Also, while we're waiting for.
All right, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me, I was muted. I would not use the word ameliorate at all. In fact, in this spring and early summer, because our windows have been open and we like to have them open for the fresh air, we have had the intrusive effect of the dog's constant barking much more palpable in our house in every part of our house, day and night, sometimes for hours at a time. It's very extreme and I am deeply frustrated that it has taken this long for something to be done about what is a very egregious breach of these bylaws. Recently, even though I knew it wouldn't do any good, I did call the police at midnight because the dog had been barking for hours. I'd like to keep talking if I can.
We're trying to get somebody to mute the person.
I just unmuted iPad two. Apologies for the interruption.
All right, so when I called the police, the police told me, and I thought this was really quite extraordinary. The police told me that they would not send an officer to the house despite the barking and they recognized that the barking was going on, but they would not send an officer to the house because the dog had bitten an officer before and so they couldn't send an officer to enforce the law, which is really quite an extraordinary thing. I was trying to think of an analogy for that and I couldn't think of one. But whatever the privacy wrapping is, and I did notice that that had gone up on the fences, it has done absolutely nothing to abate or ameliorate the situation at all. It is very, very loud at our house. My wife was awakened at three o'clock in the morning one day this week with a very bad migraine and I found her curled up in misery on the couch with this dog just pounding and pounding and pounding auditorily away in our home. So it is an extreme situation. It has not changed at all. If anything, it's worse because of the season.
Okay, we also have an attorney from our law firm who's in attendance. Mr. Proger. What are our options in this hearing? It sounds like the steps that Ms. Clayton Jones took haven't seemed to address the problem. What are we empowered to do? I mean, I know that we can label the dog a nuisance dog, but what are we able to do that will help Mr. Thomas Adams?
So thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Matt Revancher represents the town of Deerfield. So under a nuisance complaint, you have a pretty broad set of powers. You've got a, the board has to vote to make a finding that the specific dog in question is a nuisance due to excessive barking. But after that, the board has pretty broad power to try to fashion an appropriate remedy. But ultimately, I would say that the board's choices should be guided by the fact that whatever it seeks to do, it should be to eliminate the cause of any nuisance that it finds. So where I think in this circumstance where the complaint is principally about barking and excessive noise and not the dog behaving in any other way that's a nuisance, I would suggest that the board should explore options for compliance that would prevent, reduce, or ameliorate that. I would caution the board, though, that it does not have the power to order that the animal be removed from the town of Deerfield. Outside of that constraint, though, the board has pretty broad latitude to fashion an appropriate remedy. And I think as in all cases, the simplest way is to engage in a dialogue to see if Mr. Thomas Adams is seeking any particular relief from the board or is leaving it up to the board's discretion. And then also just, I usually also inquire and just to make sure whether there is any obstacle with anybody who would be burdened, like Ms. Clayton Jones, by an order entered by the board to make sure that there's no specific difficulty or unusual circumstance or hardship that would prevent it from being effective, even if there were a desire to comply. That's generally my guidance. So if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to do it, but generally this is a matter for the board's sound discretion and judgment to try to come up with an effective remedy that works for everyone involved.
So we're under a bit of a conundrum tonight in that the only other board member who's been a party to these hearings is not able to attend this evening. So I'm on my own and Mr. Gilmore is a new member of the Select Board and this is his first introduction to this issue. So it sounds as though the remedies we've tried to pursue haven't worked. I'm not an expert in this area, so the only other thing that comes to mind is, you know, in my engineering days, there are noise cancellation sorts of products that create white noise. And I don't even know if that's a reasonable thing to consider, but it doesn't sound like short of the dog being confined inside that it's not going to be able to be heard at all hours. And I'm assuming that everybody's acted in good faith here, but the problem hasn't resolved itself. So does, Mr. Cohen, do you have any ideas about what Ms. Clayton Jones would like to try next?
Well, in previous hearings, I've suggested it could be mutual in terms of white noise machines, et cetera. And I also suggested, and again, I don't know the lay of the land. It sounds like there's a valley in a sense and the noise comes up where, but it was rejected by the complainant that she could participate in putting it up, as you talk about, a sound barrier. It would have to be closer to his property, I would assume, to deflect the noise. But this is, this is a problem that can be fixed, but it takes some cooperation and because I think the next step would have to be an investment in some type of this barrier, whether it's made out, whether it's trees or some type of soundproof barrier for out of material that they have. It's doable. I'm not sure of the cost. But when I previously brought it up, Mr. Thomas Adams, who I remember, didn't want it anywhere near his property. If I remember correctly, or it might have been the expense, but if he's still being bothered by it, we, and it's all hours of the night, I think we need to think about something else.
So with every respect, I find it absolutely preposterous and frankly, personally insulting that somebody would suggest that the victim needs to be part of the solution. I'm not breaking any laws. There is a clear violation of the Deerfield Bylaw about disturbing the peace here. So the burden of this is on the person who is producing this noise. And, you know, there are certainly steps. One of the steps would be not to let the dogs out at midnight and three o'clock in the morning unless somebody's with them and has them on a leash so that they're not barking incessantly. That would at least be a step toward mitigating the intrusion of this. It seems pretty reasonable to ask someone not to have their dog outside barking for two hours at a time at three o'clock in the morning. So I haven't seen any actual genuine steps to do something about this.
Well, one thing I would point out is Mr. Thomas Adams is never going to be satisfied, but I've asked now, this is hearing number four, well, fourth that I've been to, not fourth of the complaint. And take a video. Can you take a timestamp video at three in the morning? So I have no reason to doubt you, but none of us have heard this or seen it. You do. So can we get something to be like, oh my God, that is, I want to take your word for it, but at the same time, you've dismissed anything Ms. Clayton Jones has done as being ineffective. She's not doing this purposely. If you, if this is bothering you the way it is, it would bother me too. I want, I, you shouldn't have to live this way. I agree. But can we get a little bit of of proof that this happens day and night, every day and night and at these odd hours?
The proof is easily obtainable. All you have to do is just stop on five and 10 in front of her house and listen for a little bit. That's not a problem. Also, every police department has decibel meters. If you want to come up to this house, if the police want to come up to this house with a decibel meter and listen, they can do that. Again, you're putting, you're questioning my credibility to throw doubt on a case where the evidence is utterly explicit.
And you say that, but you won't produce any. You say it's utterly explicit.
My job to do that.
As the complaint.
Her job to stop making noise.
Well, as a complainant, you're not a victim. You're a complainant about a nuisance and you refuse now for seven months to submit any evidence besides your word. Yeah, I'm not going to accept your word for it. So without the evidence, I can't really move my client further to take more expensive measures. You just think everybody else should do it for you and we're not going to do it that way. There's other steps you can.
Ordinary line of argument.
You can take steps too to ameliorate the situation. You should be putting up, using sound machines. You should be finding alternative ways to dampen the noise as well.
Imagine if the police were called to my neighbor's house for very loud rock and roll music at two o'clock in the morning and that somebody representing the complainant said, well, you should just put on noise cancelling headphones. I mean, that's a preposterous line of reasoning. And you've artfully insinuated that somehow my word is not credible. And yet, why would anyone waste their time?
Well, I've seen the work you've done online. I've seen all the letters you've written and articles you've written through the years complaining about things. So I know you're a particular person who would put the time in. I want to help you. We can resolve this. I've reached out to you. I've emailed you. Let's communicate.
You've never emailed. You've never emailed me. I've never had any.
Pardon me, pardon me, can I, we're arguing at no purpose at this point. Mr. Provater. I don't know that, short of declaring the dog a nuisance and having no resolution to Mr. Mr. Thomas Adams' problem. The only other thing I can suggest is I don't, I don't want to make this decision on my own because, you know, there are even if I declared the dog a nuisance, Mr. Gilmore probably couldn't vote to make that. So the only other thing I see is to continue this hearing one more time to our next meeting, which is the 26th, when the only other select board member who's been involved in this process can be here to vote on this. And we will make some recommendations and they won't be, you know, they shouldn't, I, I agree that the person who is complaining about an issue probably shouldn't be the one that bears the financial burden to solve it. But, you know, I want to do something that's reasonable as well. So does this? I know this is one more hearing. But what's your advice?
So my advice to the board is first, I think your instinct is correct. I think the, you know, the absence of Mr. McDaniel poses a practical issue. I know that Mr. Gilmore is a new board member. I know that you're very familiar with this, but I think you would want to have Mr. McDaniel present to vote with a quorum of two because you've both been present at all of the other hearings on this question. Two, I think that if you want to enter an order, the order is directed at the owner of the dog found to be a nuisance. I don't know that you really have jurisdiction to order anyone else to do anything if you make a finding of a nuisance. I think that crafting an appropriate remedy could include stating that the dog is not allowed to be outdoors at certain hours. If it's outdoors, it has to be supervised by an individual. You could order that the dog be confined for certain periods. I think you have some pretty broad latitude and there's some room to be creative. And the other benefit of potentially allowing Mr. McDaniel to weigh in is that you may have more capability in discussing the matter to come up with something. You may have more capability in discussing the matter to come up with something creative and something workable. Um, separately, I also just wanted to make a point of order. There there were some references by Mr. Thomas Adams to. You determining whether this is a violation of a separate bylaw enacted by the town of Deerfield. The purpose of this hearing is solely to adjudicate whether the dog is a nuisance under chapter one forty, section one fifty seven of the general laws. Um, you are not making a binding determination as to whether any of the actions violate any other statute. Or any other prohibition that's imposed, whether by the town of Deerfield or the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, I say that just to point out that Mr. Thomas Adams and Ms. Clayton Jones, for that matter. Retain the rights that they otherwise possess under the law, which includes the right to bring a private action seeking to enjoin a nuisance or to seek damages. For any nuisance or trespass. Um, that's entirely up to them. I just want to make clear for the board. That it's deciding a very narrow issue, which is whether the dog is a nuisance under the laws of the common.
So um I think then what I'm going to do is follow your advice and um continue the hearing to. Um, six thirty on June twenty six. Um, so that Mr. McDaniel can be present. Uh, at which time we will make a determination on the underlying question of whether the dog's a nuisance or not. And um make some recommendations about um how this should be addressed. Um, so I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hilt, G I. Thank you for your participation tonight and uh we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's nothing further, um, I'm happy to stay if you'd like, if you need any further assistance.
No, thank you so much. We appreciate your attendance.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, I hope everyone has a good evening. Thank you for having me.
Hey, um. All right, the next order of business is um continuation of a. Hearing on application for new wines and malt beverages licensed for Primo Pizzeria and Restaurant Inc. At four B Sugarloaf Street. Is there anyone representing? This party in attendance?
Mr. Chair, it's supposed to start at six forty-five.
Oh, it's six forty-five? I I thought it was six thirty. I'm sorry. All right, so let's deal with some minutes then.
You have two sets, one from May fifteenth and one from May twenty ninth. I'd like to note for the board that the May fifteen, the May twenty ninth minutes, there's a revision in there. I found a few um typographical errors and just some formatting that needed to be adjusted.
Okay. Um, I'll give you a couple of minutes to to look through this, Blake.
Okay.
And I'll look at the revised one. Right, okay. All right, um, so I'd make a motion to approve the uh May fifteen, twenty twenty-four minutes as written.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Uh, Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hilt, G I. And I'd like to make the motion to approve the May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four minutes as written, as revised.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hilt, G I. Um, as we still have a few more minutes, um, we had a curtail, the. Public comment period, and I know that Chris Harris has one short comment he'd like to make, so.
So, yeah, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to reflect on this past Saturday where there was the time capsule burial. And um and and a thank you luncheon thereafter at Town Hall. Um, on behalf of the Friends of Deerfield and the Three Fiftieth Steering Committee. Um, we just want to thank everyone that attended. We did have a kind of a full house, what we expected, over seventy persons uh for the luncheon. And um, uh, it was great, the participation with select board. Um, and Carolyn Chorsness did a great job of kind of being MC. And uh we appreciated the turnout, the support, uh, and all the hard work that went into it, obviously by. The Friends of Deerfield Board members and the Marie Thomases of the world, Peter Thomases of the world. And um, so that's all I wanted to say is thank the community for turning out. Um, and it was a great wrap up to a great uh three fiftieth anniversary year.
Yeah, and I just also want to recognize Holly Winkowski, who's in the audience tonight. She was instrumental in a lot of the three fiftieth work as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Um. We still have a little more time to go through. I will make a couple. I attended a meeting. With Furcog and several of other uh other regional planning commissions. This afternoon about um a federal plan. They're looking to expand a. Uh, an electrical corridor between the New York State and the Northfield. Um, hydro installations, a sixty mile corridor where they're looking to. Um, have a half mile on either side of the of this corridor to. Um, study and possibly install, you know, more and. Uh, more forward-looking electrical systems where at the early stages of trying to understand what this. Ultimately, it would give a lot of power to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to make decisions about this land and what can go there. So um, we're going to be following and participating in. Uh, a four-phase process to study what the implications are for Deerfield and the surrounding communities. Um. It's too early to say what, if anything, will be plus or minus for us. Um, do you have any uh things that you've been working on, Blake?
No, um, not right now.
Okay, um, and we obviously um. Know we're going to do some more research on the uh health agent front for for this horse question, so. Any other things that we can take up, Casey?
You could take up the sewer commitment.
Okay, um.
And I did write a motion for it. Um.
How far?
It's probably about three or four pages in maybe. Hold on, I I put page numbers on this thing so I could figure it out myself.
Too much paper.
Too much paper. Um. Um, page eight.
With the um, okay. Can you can you just give us a little preface before I make this motion?
So this is the second sewer commitment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We received. The water readings um very recently and the treasurer. Spent a great deal of time getting everything in here so we can get these bills out. Um, we are behind in the billing, so this is, she asked us to put a placeholder on. So that we can make sure we had this signed as soon as possible. So my recommendation is to for the board to. Vote and sign the commitment.
So this was after all the all the the water bills came in, I mean, the water usage came in.
We received the water readings. I want to say it was the beginning of the last week or the week, uh, the Friday before. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, we received them recently.
And I know Sarah.
She worked really hard to get.
Working over the weekend to try and get this done because she's got an important event coming up soon, so. Um, so you want to, do you know enough about this? You want to do the?
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four sewer billing commitment number two in the amount of. Eight hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-one and twenty-four cents.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hilt, G I. All right, anything else?
Uh.
Our two minutes left.
Two minutes. Um, actually, you have an appointments list. Actually, we have. Christopher's not here yet. Um.
This is for police and scams?
We don't have scams. We do have the police department appointments. I in a memo from Chief Pachurik dated June third. It it is pretty significant. Um, it's two pages long.
Let's let's hold off then, yeah.
Because I didn't, my my thought was maybe the board would choose not to read the entire thing.
Yeah.
Because it is in the packet um and available for review, but it's up to you.
No, I I'll just wait until that. Um. The participants for the.
I asked Chief Sparks to make an adjustment to his roster so that it could show more information. Um, so I expect to see that in the next day or so, so we'll put that on for the twenty-sixth.
All right. Are those folks here?
I don't. They knew what time. They knew the date and time. Um. There he is. Oscar just got on.
Okay, good. Yeah, I thought I wasn't sure. That was the applicant. Okay, so. It's now six forty-five. Um, so I'm going to um move to reopen. Um, the continuation of a. Select Board Board of Health um public hearing. On application for a new wines and malt beverages license at four B Sugarloaf Street, South Deerfield, MA. Uh, from Primo Pizzeria and Restaurant Inc. Um, and uh, Mr. Rota's is in attendance. Um, can you tell us, Casey, what uh, what? Legal information?
Valerie, I'm gonna mute you.
So, hi, Oscar. Um. Mr. Chair, we, as you know, there was a license that was approved at an earlier date this year in April. For a wine and malt beverage license for another restaurant in town. That license is still under review by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Um, I contacted. Town Council and discussed it with Town Council, and then I contacted Ralph Sacramone, who's the executive director at ABCC. And because the license that previous approval is still under review. Technically, the board does not have a license, a beer and wine license to award. So. Director Sacramony suggested. Two things, that the board, because the board does not have a license. There's one in review right now, so technically it's not available. Is it was his, was his thought. That perhaps the board retained the information in the application that was submitted by a by a Mr. Otis. And. That if a license becomes available, we notify them. Um, the other alternative is for Primos to apply for an all-alcoholic beverage. Liquor license from the town. Um, so to that end, I did further discuss it in terms of what what the board could be expected to vote. With Director Sacramony, and he gave me some suggested language, which I provided in a motion. Um, I don't know. If Mr. Otis has questions for me or for the board, I'm happy to try to answer them. But I'm not a lawyer.
Can you unmute, Mr. Otis? Can uh, can you unmute? Oh, good, thank you. We still can't hear. Still can't hear.
I'm sorry, we still can't.
Still can't hear you, um. Chris Nolan, can you try to mute and unmute him to see if that helps?
Yeah, I'll give it a try.
Okay, unmute. Okay, can you try to speak again, Mr. Otis? Uh, still unable to hear you, so um. I'm sorry uh about the technical difficulty. Um. Do you? Um, did you understand what uh Casey Warren, the town administrator, said? You can nod. Uh, so um, the options we have is to. Continue the hearing, or if you're within five minutes, you could come down to Town Hall. We could. Wait for you to arrive here and then we can have a conversation. Or we can proceed with what she recommended, which was to. Deny this application until we get clearance on whether the uh the. Whether there will be a new opening for beer and wine or, you know, you could pursue another path. So. What would you prefer to do? Would you like to come down here if you're close enough? Or do you want to? We could continue the hearing until the May twenty-sixth, I mean, June twenty-sixth. Um, if you want to be present. Um, or. If you can signal by shaking your head yes or no. So do you want us to continue this until Ju- June twenty-sixth? No, okay. So what we'll do is follow um the advice of the ABCC. And with the understanding that we will. Um, if if the 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 license that's pending doesn't get approved, that we will notify you. Is that acceptable? Okay. All right, so you want to make this motion?
Yep. Uh, we're gonna move to deny Primos Pizzeria application for an on-premise pouring license for wine and malt beverages. As there are no available licenses at this time.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hilt, G I. Thank you and sorry about the technical difficulties. So we'll keep you informed if something opens up, or if you want to come and do the all liquor license. We'll certainly entertain that application as well. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if Chris, there's Christopher.
Okay.
So he's on for seven fifteen. Um, maybe I'll text him and see if he wants to hop on sooner. If he can't. Um, maybe Chris Nolan would be willing to give you his updates on the Leary lot.
Yeah.
Chris, are you prepared to do that?
Sure. Yeah, just let me know. I can do that whenever.
Casey, I'm also available. I'm just hopping on my computer right now.
All right, um, Chris, Christopher, do you want to go and I've got your motions ready? Fixed.
Sure, I'll start uh, I'm still hopping on here, but um, yeah, uh. So top of the list, I would say, is the contract with Ty and Bond for their complete street services on Elm Street. Uh, so just as a refresher, uh, this is a contract that we're entering into with Ty and Bond. Uh, for surveying work on Elm Street. Uh, as well as a conceptual design for sidewalk and crosswalk. Um, in general, pedestrian complete streets improvements uh between Railroad Street and uh Main Street there. Um, the total is twenty-seven thousand five hundred. And uh, let me know if there are any questions from the board regarding that that contract.
Can you um, can you talk to us about the source of the money for the? Complete Streets? That's a grant that we have.
Yeah, so I'll I'll kind of lay out the funding sources here. Uh, so for this particular twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, we have a forty thousand dollar. Appropriation from town meetings specifically for complete streets. I believe that was back in a twenty nineteen town meeting. Um, and then, you know, beyond that, uh, I'm actually in the process of working with Ty and Bond on an application for the municipal. ADA improvement grants. Uh, that application is due Friday. Um, and essentially that would take. You know, up to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, you know, specifically for the sidewalk surfaces. And uh, you know, ultimately. And uh, you know, ultimately, what we'll be doing with Time Bond is working towards a full complete streets application. Um, and that would involve, you know, upwards of five hundred thousand dollars potentially uh for, you know, all of the improvements we'd like to see on that stretch of Elm Street. So. You know, changes to parking, uh, installation of a tree lawn or any other improvements that we ultimately uh decide makes sense for the town.
Blake, do you have questions?
No.
Okay, um. So I'll I'll make this motion then. Uh, move to approve contract with Time Bond Inc. for the complete streets tier three services Elm Street survey and conceptual plans as presented. And to authorize the chair to sign. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G I. Okay, um, while I'm signing, you want to go on? He's got more.
He's got more.
Yeah, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, sorry, it's it's saying I'm the Assistant Town Administrator, but I am not. So uh, yeah, I guess the next on the uh, the agenda here would be um, the contract with Bureau Happold. Uh, again, members of the board will probably recall that uh, we got a grant for this project. It's uh fifty thousand dollars from HEAT, which is a Massachusetts nonprofit. Uh, it's what's called a Kickstart Mass Grant. Uh, and this is specifically to look at feasibility for a network geothermal uh system in South Deerfield. Um, so as a reminder, this was. Three iterations, uh, you know, network geothermal around the existing town campus and some businesses downtown, then going out a little further, looking at connecting with the schools, and then beyond that, looking at connecting with Pelican and or Treehouse. Um, so it's just a feasibility study. Uh, you know, Bureau Happold would basically be. Conducting some interviews with key stakeholders Berkshire Gas, folks at Pelican, Berkshire Brewing. Um, and I've also invited some members of the Energy Committee to to participate in that as well. Um, and then they would also be looking at basically energy loads for the buildings around town around town, as well as the existing gas infrastructure. Um, see if this, you know, is a is feasible. Um, so again, it's fifty thousand dollars through the HEAT grant. And uh, the pro- project would conclude by uh, the end of the calendar year.
So you are under constraint to get this done.
Correct, and it's uh, it's taken a bit longer than we hoped to get under contract. Um, Bureau Happold had some initial issues with the Architects and Engineers contract that we sent them. Um, so we had a little bit of back and forth, but I think we're we're pretty close at this point. Uh, I believe the version in front of you has. Um, you know, one change that Bureau Happold hadn't quite gotten around to responding about. Um, but it's very minor. At this point, I think we're pretty much ready to proceed.
So do we need to make a conditional motion? Is the motion you wrote okay?
Yeah, the motion, I actually took the motion from, uh, I initially wrote one, and then I revised it to meet his uh suggested motion language. It should be all set.
So move to approve the contract with Bureau Happold Consulting Engineers PC. For the network geothermal feasibility study as presented and authorized the chair to sign. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G I. You have one more, uh, Christopher?
Yeah, a couple more here. Um. So um, next one on there would be the letter of support uh for uh the Elm Street uh application that I referred to earlier for. Municipal ADA improvements. Um, so again, that's this is just kind of part and parcel of that uh, complete streets program we talked about on Elm Street between Railroad and Main Street. Um, you know, this uh, the grant application for this particular program is due on Friday. Um, beyond the select board, I've also reached out to Jen Malard, Remalard at the Senior Center to make sure that. We get a letter from them as well. So she's she's gonna provide that too. And I think it should give us a pretty strong application for this funding.
So we are on the. You have any other questions? Okay, so you're ready to go on this, the letter support? Yeah, you're gonna have to sign this one too, or I can do it. Uh, move to approve a letter of support for the application to the Mass Office of Disability Municipal ADA Improvements Grant Program to fund Elm Street pedestrian improvements as presented. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G I.
There's one more.
Yep.
Yeah, and the the last item I'll be speaking to is uh, a letter of support for a variance that Hampshire Lumber is applying for. Um, and you know, this has to do with the building they're looking to construct on Elm Street uh next to the Leary Lot project. There's the letter has some additional details uh that the board could review. Um, but the the long and short of it is the building they're looking to construct does not quite meet our setback requirements in that district. Uh, Hampshire is hoping to be able to get a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, and you know, given the town's support for the project overall, we thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and ask the select board to support that uh application for a variance. So. Happy to pull up the uh, you know, any further details about it if the the board would like to know a little bit more, but uh, this is for a June twenty seven zoning board. That'll be coming up.
Um, I, if you can, shit, um, just show us why this was necessary. And um, for the audience as well.
Sure. Can everyone see my screen okay up here?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't.
Great. So I'll I'll try to walk people through this a little bit. Uh, so over on this side is Railroad Street. Um, this this building with the kind of dash lines around it is or the, you know, the. Uh angled lines around it is Hampshire's existing building at sixteen Elm. And then uh, this is the parcels that show um, you know, the land swap between the town and Hampshire lumber. So with that orientation, I'll let me zoom out here a little. This kind of shifts things a little bit. So Elm Street is on this side and Railroad is on this side. Here's their existing building, and then here is the proposed building, which is a little over twelve thousand square feet. I'll zoom in here. Um. This is basically the Leary Lot driveway or the proposed driveway, and it enters onto Elm Street at this point. Um, between uh, the. Property line. Oh, this is this is showing the old property line. Um, also, here's the property line, this dash line here. And you've got less than ten feet essentially between the property line and the the edge of the building. Um, in that district, we require require a ten foot setback. Um, so uh Hampshire is hoping to be able to, you know, get a variance. Um, they do already have a special permit from uh, the zoning board of appeals, and so this is kind of just trying to confirm, you know, hey, is it all right if we also. Forward with this, uh, you know, given that we don't quite have the setback, but it it doesn't seem to be posing any major issues that would warrant um revoking that special permit or anything like that.
So Christopher, you you explained to me in the conversation about this that because um. Oftentimes, the concern and setbacks is fire safety because existing structures that are too close together can become involved. Um, can you talk a little bit about the the? I I think it's five feet at the corner there, and then the twenty five foot width of the sidewalk and driveway and. Why that um seems like a reasonable um way to address that concern?
Yeah, so the setbacks obviously are pretty common to a lot of town zoning bylaws. Um, there it's not always spelled out exactly why the setbacks exist. Um, but often fire safety is a major or any kind of emergency access for that matter is a consideration. Um, in this case, you know, I don't think it's a major concern because there's a a driveway, you know, right there. It's not uh as if it's setback from a property line that then has a building. Um, so there's adequate fire access, whether or not they have the ten foot setback. Um, additionally, you know, you have setbacks for reasons of not obscuring light or airflow for other neighbors. Again, not really a concern here because the neighbor is the town and it's a driveway. So um, I think, you know, it's pretty reasonable to be asking for a variance, given that all the reasons you would have the setback aren't really present here.
And a lot of this is described in this letter of support, so I just, I wanted to tease out some of the thought process behind it before. You know, um, and to give Blake a chance to, if you haven't uh seen it earlier, I had I had the opportunity to read this before the meeting, but. So this is directed at the the Chair of the ZBA.
I actually um, I actually was at the ZBA when they approved this, so I actually know it.
Okay, good. So um, if there aren't any other questions, you want to make a motion? Move to approve the letter of support for the application of a variance under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Ten, submitted by Hampshire Deerfield LLC as presented. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G I.
Right.
Party appetite. Did you have it?
Could Joe's iPhone please mute themselves?
Thank you.
Does the, does the board have any further questions?
Blake?
Nope, I'm good.
Uh, I'm okay, Casey. You don't have anything for him, do you? Okay.
Tried to get together everything you needed.
Thanks for all the coordination on that. Appreciate it. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Christopher.
All right, so we done with your commitment?
Yep. You did the minutes.
Yep.
Chris, Chris could do the Larry Lot updates unless you want to go through.
No, let's go ahead and do the uh Leary Lot, um, which is a lot of news tonight. So go ahead, Christopher Nolan.
Sure, thank you all very much. Um, so to give an update on the Leary Lot, I think I've sent the board a lot of emails, but so that. Everyone else knows, uh, we have been in the process of working with MassDOT. To handle some of the last bits of paperwork that are needed before we can. Have a signed grant agreement that we've been trying to get for months with the Federal Highway Administration. Essentially, um, there were two uh. Pieces that needed to be approved uh in order to get this Federal Highway Administration grant executed. One of them is the right of way issue. So we were operating under the assumption for a while that because we had no plans to. Uh, have any work take place on property other than the Leary Lot, that there were going to be no right of way issues. That's what we had been led to believe. And it turned out that because there was a proposal to uh saw cut along the property line on the western edge of the lot next to Hampshire. Um, that MassDOT would not certify that we would not need any easements or anything of that nature. Uh, because. People's feet, machinery, uh, anything like that might need to cross over the property line in the process of constructing a lot if they're saw cutting along the property line. Um, I tried to find a way around that by asking if we could just push the saw cut over by a foot, but we're already. We're already up against our twenty five foot uh width of the exit. So we moved on. Um. Had a lot of help from Christopher as well as from our consultants at Rivermore, uh, and from Jeff Squire at Berkshire Design Group. It's it's really been a great team effort. Um, and what we have gotten is a right of entry agreement, which was the course of action that was recommended by MassDOT. Um, so the board approved that. Thank you very much again at your meeting on Monday. Um, we have since had it signed by Hampshire, meaning it is fully executed. Uh, and we are awaiting language from MassDOT that the town will need in order to, it's a slightly convoluted process, because what happens. Next is the town needs language from MassDOT to be able to self certify that the right of way issue is taken care of. So that's one of the last steps. The other last step that I mentioned in my ATA report as well is the uh State Historic Preservation Officer. So aside from the right of way issue, the other major. Uh, piece of approvals that were needed for getting this grant agreement out the door. Uh, was under NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. Uh, so under NEPA, uh, the piece that has taken the longest is approval from the State Historic Preservation Office. Uh, that is underneath the Secretary of State's office or the Secretary of the Commonwealth rather. Um, and that was sent to them on May twentieth for review. Now, we know that there aren't any historic properties that are impacted by this by this project. Um, we we have access to the database that they will use. To make that determination and have already confirmed several times that it won't be an issue, but nevertheless. They have a thirty day review period, and at this point, they will be at that thirty days by next week. So they. Have been eager to to kind of use that full review period that they're allotted. Um, but on the bright side, at the very latest by next week, we should have that determination back from them, and as soon as that happens. And as soon as we have the right of way issue certified, which we will have the language to do after we get a response from MassDOT. We will be prepared to have this fully executed by Federal Highway. We've been assured of that by our agreement officer over at Federal Highway Administration. Uh, so that's that. There's there's obviously been a lot of moving pieces just to kind of navigate through the bureaucracy that's needed to to get this federal grant going. Um, I I know it's it's been several months in the making, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Um, and I I I think we're going to start seeing the fruits of our our labor very soon. Uh, because another exciting update that I have on the Leary Lot is that we opened bids today. Um, and they they came in a little higher than we had budgeted for, but still well within our contingency. Um, we we intentionally. Had a had a very large cushion because we knew there was a chance of certain cost overruns. Um, so the the low bid. Uh, was a firm that's already uh been working with the town, and Christopher can definitely talk about that. I think he. Took off for the evening, but if you want to touch base with him privately, I'm sure he can. Give an update on some of the complete streets work that's been happening with Taylor Davis, and they submitted the low bid. So we're gonna be moving forward contingent upon a couple of reference checks um with Taylor Davis Landscape and Construction out of Amherst. Um, and that's exciting news as well, because that was another major step that needed to happen before we can see boots on the ground at the Leary Lot. So I think that is the extent of my update for this week. Does anybody have any questions at all?
Um, I had a question for both you and Casey, and 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 that's just a matter of. So um, are we gonna have a motion on a on approving, or or will we do that after we get the clearances from?
I think we have to wait, don't we, Chris? You guys need to meet with Taylor Davis. We don't have a notice to award, right?
We do not. Um, and yeah, we we still have to to meet with Taylor Davis. We're doing a scoping review meeting on Friday to. To double check that everything is good um with their bid, that everything is covered that needs to be. Um, and then by the next meeting of the board, which I unfortunately won't be at, um, but we we plan to have hopefully a contract in place to award. And that's also contingent on us having a Federal Highway Administration grant uh. Agreement signed because we can't be awarding construction contracts until that's done, but. I'm I'm hell bent, for lack of a better term, on getting that taken care of before I leave, so.
Excellent. So that's uh, you mentioned that the thirty days runs out some mid midweek next week?
Correct. Uh, thirty days is actually the nineteenth.
Okay. Good. Well, thanks for all the hard work.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm really eager to see it finally pay off. I know sometimes it feels like we're. Doing all of this, and there isn't much of a reward, but it it's it's on its way.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Absolutely.
Feels like Groundhog Day sometimes.
Yes.
Movie, not the actual day.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
All right, um. So the next thing.
The next thing.
Is um.
Is Chris's position.
Yeah, so first, I guess we um. We have the sad news for us, but happy news for Chris that he's moving on to a new job. Um, and that we uh have received a letter of uh resignation that your last day will be June twenty first. And um, so I reluctantly move to accept the resignation letter submitted by Assistant Town Administrator Chris Nolan. With deeper regret and sincere thanks for his hard work and dedication to the town of Deerfield.
Second.
All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G I.
So, Mister Chair, may I say? So, Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Please, by all means.
I'm gonna. This is really hard because Chris has just been amazing. Especially with all of his work on the, the Leary Lot, but so many other things that he's contributed to helping move things along here since he started. I know if Trevor was here, he would say it's going to be so difficult for him to be gone. So I just wanted to make sure I say it because I feel that way, but also because I know Trevor would say it if he were here, Chris.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate everyone's, everyone's wishes. Yeah, I've really, I've really appreciated my, my time serving the community here in Deerfield. I've taken a lot of lessons with me and I'll only be the Connecticut River away, just right on the other side of it. So yeah, always feel free to reach out.
And Chris has presented updated, an updated vacancy notice for the board to review. The suggestion is to put the vacancy out as soon as possible. I'm pretty sure that Tim wanted to, wanted that to happen once he found out that Chris was leaving. I discussed the job description with Chris and with Tim, and they have both indicated, you know, there were some things that could change, but frankly, to get the vacancy up and running, using the existing job description is probably the best way to do that. So I did write a motion for everybody to immediately post the vacancy notice for the Assistant Town Administrator's position.
I got that one.
Yeah, take. Yep. Move to immediately post the vacancy notice for the Assistant Town Administrator position and use the current job description.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, aye.
Tim Hill, gee, aye. Now it's final.
Chris, good luck.
Thank you very much. And again, yeah, I'll, I won't be a stranger.
You're not that far away.
Nope, I will be right over the river in Montague. So, yeah, again, thank you all, and I, I look forward to continuing my professional relationship with everyone.
So now what do we do?
So now, Crystal, we've talked about this. Chris is going to throw it up on some of the, the key places we needed. We'll send it out. He'll send it out through STAM, which is the Small Town Administrators Group. We're going to put it up on the Mass Municipal Association website, because that gets the most traffic for municipal positions, especially since this is sort of, it's a key position because it assists the town administrator, but it also is key assisting with the select board as well. And I think that's probably our best driver. We're going to put it up on the website. We'll put it up on the bulletin board out here in the front. And I think, Chris, you were going to put it up on, were you going to put it up on Indeed as well?
I was.
So if, if Chris thinks we need to put it up somewhere, or if I think of something, we'll coordinate that, but we'll get it up tomorrow.
Okay.
So it's ready.
Great. So now in the latter part of this, we have some, some general appointments just for the police department tonight, right? You probably know most of these people, Blake.
Mm-hmm.
And do we, do we need to read through all of them?
So normally Trevor does, but I've, it, the appointments list is pretty strong, it, I mean, long, and
Yep.
Chris included this in the packet, so it's available for people if they would like to read through it. But frankly, I think you could consider making a motion that reflects basically the information provided in the memo dated June third, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, okay.
So I wrote you a shorter motion than one that really included reading it into the record.
Good.
Move to approve the police department appointments sent in a memo dated June third, twenty twenty-four by Chief Pachuric as presented.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, aye.
Tim Hill, gee, aye.
All right, so I will let John know. You can expect motion, you can expect, sorry, I was looking at the word motion. You can expect SCAMS to come before you next on the next agenda. I asked, I don't know if Blake heard me, but I asked Josh to make a couple of adjustments in how he presented the appointments list that he has. So he's going to do that and we'll get it to you as soon as we get it. I'll make sure it's on the next agenda. And then I did provide the board members with an updated list, and Pat's been updating this, of annual appointments for you to review. As we continue to get appointment applications for peo, for people, we'll let you know. And we're, we've compiled many of them into documents that are electronically available. I know Chris earlier this week sent out several. I sent out one. We received several more. So what may be worthwhile for us to do is wait until next Friday to compile another set of documents for you all to look at, because thanks to Chris, we have an application for everybody to use, and people are using it and sending things in. I received two today. So it's a lot to compile. And since I'm receiving so many, I think I want to give us a little bit of time to capture as much information as we can.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's great. And if you feel that the board would benefit from asking individual applicants if they could provide any additional information, I don't know that that's standard or.
It isn't normally standard, but we don't usually get as, quite the flurry of applications. There are several applications for both alternate and regular ZBA membership. I think maybe between now and the next meeting, if the board wanted, and we have sent you several ZBA ones. If the board wanted to consider some sort of a, a short conversation with applicants, that is something that could happen. The board's done it before, particularly with the planning board a few years ago, when we had several applicants for to fill a planning board spot for a certain period of time, Blake. There was a point where we had a couple resignations and we had to fill spots. So until that next election, the board received several requests for appointment and then conducted what amounts to a short interview discussion process with those interested candidates. So if the board wanted to do that, maybe you guys could think about that between now and the twenty-fourth, and we could put it on the agenda so that there's some framework for that.
Okay, so we just notify you if we want to do that?
If you want to do that, notify me.
Individually, yep, okay.
Individually. And then you'll see if we receive any other applications for other positions or for other appointments, we'll include those for you. It's probably going to be a lot of paper, so I just want to warn you.
Yep. We don't have any, do we have any permits under review?
We do not.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. And I don't think we have any updates on town campus buildings. You guys conducted your process on Monday night to review the architect submissions. And I know Chris, Christopher isn't here, but I know Christopher's working on that. He and I talked about it earlier today, because there's some information that's been requested from the EDM stu, the firm EDM Studio. So he's working through that. I'm trying to help him with it. But I got to think about it for a few minutes sometimes when he asks me something.
So we're, we're bound down to mail?
We're, we're about down to mail and the administration report. So there are a few things in the mail that you might want to take a look at.
Yep.
One of them is the signage notification we receive from DOT. I have not sent that to Kevin. But maybe it's worthwhile to send it to him, because they basically are notifying us that we have a few signs that are deteriorating that we should replace.
So that's the, on the mail list, that's the
That's.
The third or fourth item?
I believe.
South Deerfield Village Center tourist-oriented directional sign replacement?
Yep.
Okay. So your, your, your thought is to?
Let's send it to Kevin and see if he can start setting up a process to replace it. They, the dimensional signs have specific requirements. My thought in sending it to Kevin is to figure out who the vendor is he would use to do this, because we know Kevin's going to be gone soon.
Right.
So that was my thought. And unfortunately, I didn't have a chance.
I think DOT has the vendor, because they're the ones that
They may, yeah, they may do that.
Size of the sign and the rest of it, so, yeah.
So if he can give me some pointers on the contact information, that would be helpful so that we can alleviate some stress in that sense, because I don't know what they're going to say. Or I don't know exactly how to order it either.
So before we, we've, we've had some conversation with the horse complaints earlier, but, and we'll acknowledge these letters, but what about the Fire Consumer Confidence Report?
That's a, that's a routine report, similar to other types of report we get, reports we get. It has to be filed a certain way, so they give us a copy of it.
And so this is basically notifying us that
Info, yeah, it's information.
And you take the necessary action, if there is any?
I can.
Yeah. So we will need to consider this and then ask you to do something?
You could.
All right.
You could do that.
Tonight?
I think it's a mail item. I think if you want to consider doing something, maybe we throw it on Indeed. I, I don't. You know me, I tend to try to keep things clear-cut so people
Yep.
Can see. The other thing is, is you could have Kevin and I confer about it, because
Right.
If there is an action, there are times that Kevin does execute some of the responses to these.
Yep.
Because it's, it's within sort of the parameters of, or the four corners of what we expect him to do as a superintendent. If he confers with me, and I, I could then take that action if it's necessary.
Yeah, well, why don't, why don't you, I mean, if Blake agrees, why don't you, and he confer and then bring any recommendation to us?
If we need to do something, we can bring it back to you.
Okay.
All right, let me write myself a note.
So I'm
So these are all the, the readings that they took from the water itself, to make sure that it was.
Yep, okay. And this was done by Stanley Yazwinski. I guess this is the Deerfield Fire District, which is largely around Old Deerfield.
Right, but their, their wells are out on Stillwater and up in that area there.
And, and we also, I think we received a, a letter in the mail. I, I'm in this district, so I think we received a letter in the mail already about the findings. When I read it, it seemed too layman, okay, but always better to let Kevin Scarborough weigh in on it.
Yep.
And then we have, and we heard from Mr. Johnson, and
We did.
And we didn't hear from Mr. Mono, but we have a letter from him about the horse. And then I guess Matthew spoke at the end, Matthew Proxel.
Yes. They're, they're the two that are affected.
Exactly, where, where Mr. Mono is a little further afield.
It's across the road.
So, and as we told them, we're going to, we're going to share this information and their, their wishes with the lawyer. Casey will, and, and then
I have a note to do that.
Advise us. What if anything we can do short of? I mean, obviously, they're right. If you're going to do anything that involves disinterment, you want to do that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, after, especially when it starts to heat up, it's going to get worse.
But I, now that I understand their concerns better, it's, you know, DEP doesn't want to give us a written letter, which leads me to believe that, you know, well, I don't know. I won't say anything. They just don't want to tell us.
Right.
They told us, you know, in words that they don't think we should dig it up, but, you know, we'll let our lawyer tell us what we could do, because there are legitimate concerns, especially with young children next door. The water in that area is so so persistent. And so, so high.
Yes.
All right. What's the next thing? Oh, what, can you talk about this liability? It sounds the, the summary of liability in her chapter twenty-one E. Some May's June sixth letter. Or is that just a note?
I think it's this, I think someone
Yeah, yeah.
Writing something. I don't have a full copy of it all.
Does this go with the Does this go with the D, does this go with the DEP letter?
Yeah.
I said, that's what I'm thinking, is it goes with the DEP letter. So they send us these letters as notification that something's happened. So that in this case, it was a diesel fuel release.
Oh, right.
They let us know.
Yeah.
And so this is a twen, the twenty-one E, I recognize that reference. The twenty-one E usually means you have to do some remediation to the site. And this happened on five and ten, actually. So they're notifying us.
Yep.
We're always the CC on these. We see, we see quite a few of them. We've had releases in various areas of town.
And this being on a state highway, is that they're taking care of it?
They have to, so DEP notifies the person that was alleged to have caused the release, and then they notify us. And then they'll, as, as things progress, we will get additional notifications, particularly if there's issues with how the release is handled. It's very prescribed, so twenty-one Es are very prescribed. My reference background in terms of twenty-one Es is how we had to deal with the old highway garage. It required excavation, removal of any contaminated material, disposal of that material. And it usually requires an engineer to, in our case, it required an engineer to sort of shepherd us through the pro, through the process. But DEP will keep us up to date if there's issues with that fix, fixing, in air quotes, that release.
All right, and then there's this telecommunications letter.
That is the telecommunications letter related to Comcast, correct? So Trevor and I talked about this, because I, and I was waiting to talk to him, because I remembered when I first came back in twenty twenty, he sort of gave me some background on the Comcast renewal that had happened after I left in twenty sixteen. So we're up against the Comcast renewal again. And when he and I talked about it the other day, we're both going to do a little bit of background checking, because I've never actually done a Comcast renewal. The previous town administrators had handled it, because they're usually ten-year agreements. Ours is up December of twenty twenty-six, but there's a renewal negotiation period, and there's two different paths you can take. You can take the formalized process with, which takes quite a while. Or you can take a streamlined process, which is direct negotiation with Comcast itself. Generally, this is done using what is called the Cable Advisory Committee. So the first, when I saw that, the first question I had was, do we have an active cable advisory committee? And it seems like we may not, because again, this comes up every ten years. People may not be aware of it. So I think in light of the fact that we need to do a little bit of research on that, it may be useful if we consider doing the streamlined approach. But Trevor's question to me was, what's that entail? And is there any other way we can broaden, you know, what's offered? And we don't think so. I think once you have a cable provider, there's really, really very little maneuverability there.
You can't go to another provider?
Right. Because, for some, and I don't remember all the details, so this is what I said to him. I said, look, let me do a little bit of research and then I'll come back with more information. But frankly, it's probably useful if we figure out about the Cable Advisory Committee and then research the process a bit more, which is what I would like to do.
Yeah, I think that's, we definitely need to know.
We need to get on it, but we need some more information before you guys can make a better decision, because it's going to be your decision, how you, how you move forward.
Well, I, the other thing I'd like to find out about this is that, you know, you, you do have advertised themselves, there are other cable companies saying that they can come into town. So what we're finding out is they can't come into town?
Well, that's what I want to know, and that's what Trevor and I both
And I thi, I think there might be people in town that have some background in there that we could put on, that maybe And I thi- I think there might be people in town that have some background in there that we could put on, maybe add up.
Well, there is a cable advisory committee and if it's not active, you can appoint to it, I would think.
Right.
Um, if there are people interested, have them send an application in because this is one of those things that we really could use some expertise on. Now, I do have a friend that used to do this professionally. Um, he worked in a cable access television group. So he has some background, but he and I haven't, we're playing phone tag right now. So I wanted to ask him some of these questions too, because anecdotally, he's gonna have some information I may not be aware of.
And it, you know, I don't know if Lisa has any knowledge about this either. I.
She may, and if I get a chance, I'll ask her.
Okay.
Because that, that's also one of the avenues I thought of.
We'll, we'll revisit.
But for, yeah, we're gonna have to revisit it.
Okay. And, um, I think that's all. And then, and we're to, to your report.
So I, my first question, I have a few things I wanna give you guys in terms of background. Um, there's a couple of things that have been hanging around that I know people are concerned about. One of them is the landfill solar project. So Next Amp has been a little slow to turn around requests for information from our consultant, Beth Greenblatt. Our consultant helped, just for background, Blake, our consultant is part of Beacon, um, Integrated Solutions, I think. She specializes in solar in Massachusetts. And she helped our town council and the towns and the select board complete a request for proposal process to obtain a company to put solar on the landfill. Uh, years ago, this has been years in process. Things like COVID and contract negotiations really took a toll on, on timing. So then we had, they had a slowed, a slowdown, the company that awarded, that was awarded the contract, Next Amp. They had a slowdown in the interconnection study and then the actual contract process for that. So that took a long, long time. We, we recently received in- information from them that Beth could then evaluate through the lens of what's allowed and what's not allowed based on not only our RFP process, but where the interconnection study indicates Next Amp should fall within, there, there's a whole structure, they call them tranches. There's a whole structure that they would fall with on, w- within, based on the study itself. So she finally received some information and she and I had a meeting with them this week. And they provided, th- they sort of asked us some questions and provided a back and forth and basically what I told them I would do, and this was after some discussion, I told them that I would forward the information that they were gonna respond to Beth with and then set a meeting up with council. Because we need Beth and council to sort of outline a path that then you guys can talk about in executive session because it has to do with contract negotiations. Not only for the pilot agreement, but for the lease agreement for the land itself. They both, both those things are connected. They balance each other out. So if one's low, the other one's higher and vice versa. So there's more information you're gonna need and you're gonna need a little more background from Beth, so I'm happy to, to be the conduit for that. Um, so that was the first thing. I know that, that there's going to be a change with the half marathon route based on some communication from Adam because the dry bridge is closed. So he's working on that and I think he sent me an email today, but I haven't read it. Uh.
Yeah, I think he, he suggested an alternate.
They, yeah, I think he suggested an alternate route and I know he's in, um, communication with Allison Masley over at Treehouse, so that's going on. I will let you know that we, and I think I've sent some emails, but we've received at least two complaints about concerts at Treehouse, so we're gonna have to address that. And Allison's aware of them. I shared them with her. I have not had a chance to meet with Allison yet, but I'm thinking that might be a good idea because the complaints, really they're noise complaints. The noise carries in weird, weird ways in the valley, we know that. So I wanna hear what she has to say, but there may be recommendations to at least get decibel measurements. I don't think we actually have that equipment. It's fairly expensive equipment. The last time we were measuring decibels for anything remotely like this, it was probably ten or fifteen years ago, and I think we borrowed the equipment if what Dick reminded me is true. So to the extent that we can measure noise, it's not an easy thing to do and we don't have the equipment that I'm aware of. So that may be in the offing for you guys, but I did wanna, you know, publicly note for people that we have received some con- some complaint.
And I think that these might be complaints from people didn't claim, they've changed the direction slightly.
They have.
And trying to direct it more towards the highway and, and so maybe in changing it, they, they created a, a problem that wasn't there before. But you're right, we have to actually know, you know, if, if the decibels are above what they're allowed to do, um, both on the site and if, if they're, you know, distances away. Um, I know my next door neighbor plays rock and roll music. You know, he's a young guy, fourteen or so, it's really good. Um, and I hear it, but you know, it's, it's not as, it's not the same as a, as a public concert, so.
With, with speakers that go to the, almost to the roof.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's a different thing. They have made some changes to how the stage was arranged. That was the reason that I made sure that Allison knew about the complaints. Um, I am very sure that at least one, probably both of the people that I recall their names right now um, will, will probably wanna talk about this, so I thought I should get ahead of it, at least by bringing it up with you and letting you know that I've, I'm trying to do at least a little bit of background so that you guys have a place to start.
Keep in mind, not only the, the sound of it, but, uh, when you have a deep bass like that, the vibration of it too.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a lot of times people misinterpret the sound for the fact that things are just vibrating because of those speakers are just throwing out sound waves that are vibrating through, can vibrate for miles.
Yeah, different Hertz levels create different kinds of problems for people. Some don't like the high notes and other people don't like the bass notes, as you said.
You guys know more than I do. That's a good thing. Um, I cannot be an expert at many. Um, alright, so.
But thank you.
We did receive, I just wanted you to know. I mean, I know I send you guys a lot of emails, but there are times I think people think I don't tell you things and that's not the case. I'm sending a bunch of email out. Yeah, I, I know people don't wanna see emails from me, but it's usually because I want you to be aware of something. So we also have a recommendation from the building commissioner on the permit fees. This was saved in our meeting materials files, but I forgot to ask you if we could include it. So I talked to, um, Amy this afternoon and we're gonna put it on for the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So he, he wrote a memo up. Um, there's a couple of other things that are just hanging around. The police HVAC system, I know if you're driving around, that's the office, you've seen the trucks. They're putting that system in, it's, it should be done by the end of the month. Um, and there's various things going on. They need connections to different things, so we're just trying to work with them, make sure that happens. The Stillwater Bridge repairs, we ha- still have some work to do on the Article ninety-seven and I think one of the things that I received was follow-up requests from Open Space and Rec. And the reason they tie in is Article ninety-seven is something we're gonna have to deal with in terms of the bridge repairs, but also the goals that Open Space wants to achieve by putting more land in conservation. And there's a parcel that's nearby, that's near Still, Stillwater, that might be useful. So I've asked council to give me some assistance and then thereby give the Open Space Committee some assistance on this. So that's out there for her to deal with as well.
Good.
Um, how, so after we met, I've been thinking, after we met yesterday, um, and I had a conversation this morning with our soon-to-be retired Public Works Superintendent. How does the board wanna proceed? Do you wanna have a separate meeting and really hammer out a process to move ahead with evaluating divisions, the divisions, and yet we still need staff to run things? Like we need an operational plan here. Do you guys wanna sit down and have a separate meeting to do that when Trevor's around?
We're also.
We're talking about the DPW.
Right, we were also talking about interviewing Chris.
Right, right. I mean, I, I didn't. I didn't use the same question, so it'll still be useful. I did meet with him personally over at the DPW and walked around and just acquainted myself with stuff, but my concern is, one is that, you know, we've talked to Mr. Bergeron, that was a good interview. Um, he needs to know something by a certain date, but we can't have a process be- between now and then. So it's gonna be difficult. We're gonna have to find him, if that's a route we wanna pursue. We're gonna have to lean on Casey to tell us how we do that, um, and, you know, right? Because with, with Chris Miller, if we wanted him to be the, he's, he's active as the interim chief on a number of occasions for health emergencies and for, you know, um, other reasons. And he's already employee, so we could do something like we did with, um, South County EMS where an internal person became the interim chief for a period of time while we went through a process. I'm not sure, and I wanna get some legal advice about and Casey's advice about how we do that if we go outside and we haven't gone through a process because I don't feel comfortable and I know you probably don't either.
No.
Um, so we need to sort this out.
So I was thinking, if we wanted to have a special meeting, um, you guys, I can text Trevor and see if he could do a meeting or email him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, but if you wanted to have a meeting just to focus on that topic, I can tell you what we've done in the past. Um, in terms of continuity of service, it might be most expeditious to, cause we've done this in the past when we've had departments where we needed to have that continuity, so we created a pathway where there was a temporary pay adjustment to allow for a person, um, to take on some of those duties and, and receive appropriate compensation to take that on. Um, it may be that it would be useful for us to hire a temporary laborer to add to the team since we're already down a person.
Yep.
Um, there's, there's, I've had conversations with other staff people about sort of the administrative pieces versus the operational pieces. I think if we could come to some sort of consensus relatively soon, it would be easier. And I think everybody would feel a little more secure. But I do think there's gonna have to be, and so Blake has not experienced this. But there was a period of time where we had a severe staffing shortage in the financial department. And what we had to do was make adjustments with other departments to spread some of that stuff out so that we, so the critical work.
I'm very aware of how that works.
Yeah, I bet you are. We did it, but we did it sort of on a much smaller scale, scale than I think you might have experienced. You've had a bigger job than me. So we did the best we could and we tried to mitigate circumstances. It may be that we're in a similar situation.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it would be useful to have a, you know, four o'clock meeting and, you know, but Trevor's um, with Stevie next tonight, so I don't really wanna bother him. But, um.
So.
Okay, okay, we'll let that.
So we do have to post for it. The earliest we could post is Monday afternoon.
Yeah, cause we've got the.
Um, Personnel Board has a meeting at six o'clock too. So I have to go to Personnel because that's one of my assignments. Um, so the earliest we could do is Monday. Do you wanna try to do it Monday or Tuesday?
Can we shift it for Tuesday?
Yeah, if you want to.
Cause I'll be in Boston.
Okay.
I just don't know what time we're gonna be back.
Yeah, yeah, no, they can take care of that.
Um, I will see if we can do Tuesday at four.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do in person?
Yeah, I think that would be best. Um, assuming Trevor can.
I will check with him. If he can't, then I'll see what we can do.
Sorry to interrupt. I don't know if this changes anybody's mind, but the Finance Committee is meeting at four o'clock on Tuesday. Uh, theirs is remote, but I don't know if anybody was interested in going to that. Uh, if not, then they could both happen simultaneously. I just wanted to make sure people were aware.
Um.
I mean, I'm, I'm available at three. I don't know about Trevor. I don't know about Blake.
Wanna do?
Um.
I can see if Trevor's available.
I'll make sure I'm available.
Three o'clock?
Yeah.
I'll do it at.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
And I will talk to him about whether he can be here. Um, that's most of what I have. There was a couple of other little details, but most of it you've seen in emails, so.
Okay. Well, it's pretty comprehensive.
Oh, I had one question for you. In terms of the agenda next for the twenty-sixth, are you gonna put ARPA on there?
Um, I'm, I'm hopeful.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, uh, I gotta see what Brenda says. She says she's gonna have the information I need, but.
Okay.
Um.
So Blake had asked if we could add something to the agenda and I had sent the information out. It was a questionnaire to the chairs and committees. Um, so I just wanna, if, if.
That can go on the agenda as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, um. Did I forget anything, Blake? You had asked me a couple of things.
No, I took some of them off.
Um.
You can look at them a little bit further down the line. And I, I do have a couple that I may wanna talk to you about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyways, see if we can put them on, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we're still working on some public records requests and, and one of them is related to uh, eighty-five North Main Street. And it's really, it pertains to the environmental study they're doing on that property. Senior, it's a senior housing thing. Um, we can't find those records, so I'm gonna reply back and let them know. I've already done my best to answer their survey questions. So they're gonna continue to finish this environmental piece of it because I guess it's part of developing the RFP.
Right.
And I have not heard from Lili about the RFP, but she'll let me know if she needs anything from me. You do have two requests. You have land, and they're actually land-related. I sent an email about one of them, but I wanted to outline really quickly the other one. So we, there, I mentioned the parcel that Open Space Committee is interested in.
Right.
And I have some of that information. I will send it out to you. But there's also a, there's a request for consideration to sell a piece of property along Conway Road. It's map one forty-nine, lot eighteen point one. Um, there's some background on that property that involves Board of Health, so I'm gonna speak to the Board of Health agent. I did send an email about it, but I wanna speak to him. Hopefully he'll be in tomorrow. I can talk to him about it. And then I was advised this afternoon that someone, a potential buyer for a property along Pecum Truck Drive is interested in having the town build out the road beyond the cul-de-sac. And I can give you a piece of paper. I was trying to make a copy and then I had to fix something before the meeting, so I didn't have it printed. But the parcel, the town owns the parcel beyond the cul-de-sac, so at the end of Pecum Truck Drive, there's a cul-de-sac and it sort of stops, but there's property beyond there that the town owns. And at some point in time, I think the intent was to extend the road. But there seems to be some resistance or may have been some resistance to that because the road and, uh, Comtuck Drive ends in a cul-de-sac. You can see on a, to pot, on the, one of the maps in the system, the GIS system, you can see that there's a basically a trail that goes all the way down to River Road. So somebody who's interested in buying a piece of property beyond the cul-de-sac wants the town to build the road. And I wanted you to be aware of it because it was brought to my attention. Frankly, it's a pretty complicated thing. It would cost lots of money. And that area is not maintained, so I wanted to give you just.
How would it affect the neighbors out there?
It, it would be a significant process because the neighborhood would probably, you know, I, I know that that area is interested in maintaining its quiet solitude. I've had, I've actually had residents out there tell me that. Um, but you should know it's out there.
Yeah, and I, I also think that there's some Conservation Commission questions about, I'm, I've had discussions about that, so it's, I know that Pete Law lives out there, so he might be a resource about understanding the
Impact.
The, 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 the types of land that's out there. Um, yeah.
Plus, it's an expensive endeavor that they have to fund.
Um.
And I'm not sure that's in, with, within our ability to pay for at this point.
Yeah, I'm.
Just based on the last budget season.
I'd certainly wanna hear from somebody that knows the law, whether somebody can just say, hey, I want you to build a road, so I can build a house somewhere. I mean, that seems a little extreme to me.
That thought did cross my mind.
So.
So, that's for informational purposes.
The other part of it is, you're saying that you think we have a parcel of land up there.
I know we own it, I did look it up, we do own the parcel beyond the cul-de-sac, but it stops, and I can show you what that looks like. I printed it, Kevin showed me how to find it. But for informational purposes, at least you know that the question's out there, and yes, I think we would have to get some advice from legal counsel about it. That's all I have.
Alright.
Chris, what do you have?
I got nothing.
Right, um, well, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I move that we adjourn second, all those in favor?
Blake Gilmore, I.
Tim Hill, G.I. Alright, thank you.
Thank you all, have a great night.